Of the Devon Health and Wellbeing Board on October the 23rd. I'm glad to say that we're corporate, we're corret. And thank you Wendy for helping facilitate the understanding of that and making it work. Phew. So really good. I'd like to welcome everybody, everybody online as well. So welcome to Jackie, Justine, Stephanie, Mary Maloney and Will and Sonia and Ian online. And to be assured that in the room, we have the sufficient number of councillors to ensure that this meeting is corret. Just a reminder that the meeting has been live streamed. And I ask those joining remotely to remain muted until they're due to speak. Please ensure that you're speaking into the microphone. Just been reminded about that myself. I assume that you've read the papers that were provided to you in the pack. And if you can keep your cabinet members, if you can keep your introductions to certain items pretty brief, that would be delightful. And we don't share any presentations until they're due to go on the screen. So I've got a number of apologies. Julian Brazil, Louise Osscott, Amy Beat, Damian Ellis, Dan Evans, Adele Jones, Phil Mantay, Julian Wooster and councillor Hodgson, but councillor Hodgson's online as I understand. If that's correct, we'll move on. So are there any declarations of interest? I'll look around the room. There are none. And then we move straight into the minutes of the meeting of the 10th of July for approval. So I can sign, sign those, those meeting minutes. If not now, I can do that during the meeting. Okay. So for that one, do we need to approve them or is it, We approve and they're seconded. Okay. And I'll, I'll make sure I sign those during the meeting or at your discretion. So I'd just like to welcome Ian Hittkin, who's attending in his capacity as a co-opted member of the council standards committee to observe and monitor compliance with the council's ethical governance framework. So it means that we're all going to speak to each other nicely and all the technology will work. Welcome Ian. So on the first item, which is the joint health and wellbeing consultation launch, the presenting officer is Steve Brown with Simon Chant. So the recommendation is to support and promote the consultation through their networks and organisations to contribute to the final strategy. So we're going to have a presentation now about what the strategy is. I personally am really happy with, with what the, the team have been able to produce. It's written in a style and a form that is nice and simple. And I believe it's a great start. So I give the floor to, to Simon and Eleanor and Steve.
Perfect. Thanks. We'll just get up.
Yeah, just showing the screen.
Thank you. So I'm Ellen, I'm one of the public health registrars. So we just want to take a chance to introduce the new Devon Health and Wellbeing draft strategy to yourselves and outline some of the next steps as we move forward. So the new joint health wellbeing strategy is hopefully going to represent a new direction for Devon. So unlike previous strategies, we've taken a more inclusive and accessible approach rooted in the belief that health belongs to everyone in the community. So we're trying to reflect a fundamental shift that we're designing for and with the people of Devon rather than just about them. So in order to ensure this, we have, can you just skip to the next slide? Sorry Simon. In order to ensure this, we have designed it to ensure that engaged as many people as possible. We've used clear and concise language, shorter sentences, straightforward vocabulary and accessible explanations, removing any unnecessary barriers to understanding. It isn't about oversimplifying complex issues, but it's recognising that everyone in Devon should be able to see their place within the strategy and feel empowered to take part and shape their health and wellbeing in their community. Next slide. So in terms of timeline, we started sort of late 2024 with the local government association. So this phase helps us to set out the foundations for redevelopment and ensure that we're aligning with the best national practice and our own local context. In the summer, so August, we held a strategic workshop with board members where we started to shape some key themes and priorities. The board input here was essential in pulling out some key themes that we've taken forward into the workshop. So we held a workshop back in September and this session had over 50 people from 22 different organisations and a total of 130 stakeholders were involved at this stage. So the collaborative approach hopefully will bring a broad range of insights and feedback and really reflect local voices. As of eight minutes ago, the draft has been published on to, for public consultation. So we're wanting to gain as much feedback as possible here. And this is really crucial that we get an opportunity to provide of feedback so that we can refine the strategy as much as possible. Into December, myself and Simon and the public health team will continue to edit and the strategy to hopefully reflect what's brought up during the consultation. And with the final draft being available from January 2026. It's, we are embracing a new way of working with this new strategy. So we are not aiming to fix everything at once. Instead, our aim is to focus on a small number of priorities where collaboration across services will make the greatest difference. So the strategy is going to aim to build on what good work is already happening in Devon and it's shaped on what communities have told us. Our shared ambitions to use the collective strength to drive meaningful and lasting change. So the Health and Wellbeing Board is evolving and with the support of the local government association, extensive stakeholders, we're shifting from a more traditional council committee to a more agile, inclusive system partnership. So what this means for us is fewer clearer priorities with some clear shared ownership and accountability, for example champions, being more purposeful, so moving away from passive receiving of reports and having a bit more of a so what does this mean for our priorities? How do we move this forward? Ensuring that the board connects with real world outcomes and it's guided by our core principles as well as creating a wider network, bringing in lived experiences and reviewing our membership to ensure we reflect the people and the communities of Devon. So these changes have been backed strongly and there's a lot of support and appetite for this board to be more dynamic, collaborative and action focused. So we've chosen four guiding principles. So these are our foundations that should run through everything that we do. They're not our work streams or our priorities, but they should be in the background. So they represent how we want to work and what we believe is important, regardless of the specific action or focus area. What we've chosen is climate care. So Devon County Council has declared a climate emergency and we need to recognise that within our strategy. The health of people and the planet are linked, clean air, clean water, climate resilience, protect our health and wellbeing now and into the future. We've chosen opportunity for all because not everyone in Devon has the same chance to live well. Where we'll be committed to fairness, tackling disadvantage and listening to lived experience. Roots for life, because health is shaped through life and strong foundations in childhood help people thrive into old age. This also allows us to keep our healthy ageing visible across all of our work streams, even though this hasn't been selected at the moment as a priority. And we want to ensure that we're taking a life course of approach in all of the work that we do. Finally, engaging in power. So people's voices need to be heard and we're changing how the board works to ensure communities are truly involved in the shaping of decisions. And our work should move forward to ensure that we are listening and hearing the voices of Devon. So those core principles will guide our priority focuses. So these are what we want to focus mainly across the strategy. So we want people in Devon to live happier, healthier lives and we want to make it happen. So with these four priorities. That's why with the support of the LGA and learning from our public health work, we feel that these are the four places that we can truly align and drive meaningful change. It's important to recognise that this doesn't mean other issues aren't important and it doesn't mean that we feel that those things should be neglected. We want to ensure that we are aligning efforts to drive meaningful change rather than agreeing to change the world. So our four priority areas are mental health, best start in life, housing and then rural areas and access to services. So there are some important elements of the strategy that are still going to need some ongoing work. So it is still a draft. There are components that are essential to ensure that our strategy is not just aspirational, but it's practical, measurable and rooted in partnership. So these are, we need an action plan. So clearly outlining what we're going to do each year and how this aligns with our priorities and core values. Also, it will identify who is, who is responsible for delivering actions and ensure we are accountable across partnerships. This will help us keep track and allow us to update and ensure there's corrections where we need them. Additionally, there'll be a partnership map. So identifying where different organisations are represented on the Health and Wellbeing Board. It also helped to clarify roles, showcase breadth and collaboration and highlight where we work across different sectors. It will also reference other local strategies, so such as the One Devon Five geared joint plan and as well as the Health and Care Strategy, which was also published this week. Finally, we will have a scorecard and it will be a simple traffic light system. And this can be regularly assessed to ensure that we are hitting our targets and outcomes. Green, we're on track. Amber, whereas tensions needed and reds where urgent action is required. The scorecard will help the board and the wider public hold us accountable and see where we're making a difference. So the draft strategy has now been published and our consultation process is going to run for six weeks. So that takes us to the fourth of December. We really want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to share their views and shape the direction of the strategy. One of our main tools for getting this will be the Have Your Say website. So this will be a central place that anyone can go online, read the strategy, leave comments for feedback. It's open to the public. It's easy to access and it'll be available the whole time. We're going to share this with everyone who attended our Health and Wellbeing Conference for their comments, but also for them to share wider with their networks. And we therefore ask everyone here today to also feed into this consultation and share on with your networks. Please encourage people to fill it out, or if you want to directly email myself or Simon, please also feel free. I'll pop our emails at the end. We're also planning a number of bespoke engagement sessions. So these will be some conversations with people like VCSE organisations, strategic leads across different networks, as well as the Healthy Aging Network to ensure that we're getting the voices of everyone and everyone has a chance to share. Ultimately, the goal is to co-produce a strategy. It is not top down and we truly believe that lived experience, expertise and insights of our community will shape this. So between now and January, we'll gather as much feedback. And then ongoing, we will make those changes into December. From 2026 onwards, we're building a process of regular review. So looking at how we work, how we engage and how we adapt to ensure this strategy remains dynamic and responsive to Devon's needs. It's a living strategy and it's built with people and not for them. And we appreciate your continued leadership and engagement is what's going to bring this strategy to life. So thank you for the ongoing support and enthusiasm that everyone's had throughout this process so far. And we hope that the new strategy will demonstrate a new future for Devon's Health and Wellbeing Board. If you've got any questions, any feedback that you want to send directly to myself or Simon, our emails are up on there. So please do drop us an email. We're very happy to take any questions now if anyone has any.
So I just want to say thank you to both Simon and Eleanor and all those that have been involved in the creation of this draft. I am so happy with the way that the draft looks at the moment and the fact that it's very readable and accessible as a result of that. So I'm very happy with that. The, the, the organisation of the events that led to this draft is also extremely well appreciated. And, and I think we've done, I feel like we've done something different and new in that context. So I do have one question. So with this, you're using the abbreviation core and the very first one is caring for the climate. So I'm trying to understand if we could potentially use a different form of words which says caring for the climate, but we can emphasise the health element a little bit more earlier in the phrasing so that we are clearly dealing with health and we are dealing with the climate. But I want to make sure that the, it's quite clearly stated, it's about health and climate, not just about climate. It's just my preference. So is that possible to potentially?
Definitely.
Look at a tiny rewording in that area.
Yeah, all feedback. Yeah, definitely possible. And there's lots of things. It's very much a draft that had, it was a three work, three week, I think turnaround from the end of the stakeholder to this one. So this is a draft and yeah, please all comments. And that's a great one that we'll definitely take a look at.
Open up the floor to comments from any of the participants online or offline, online or in the room. Denise.
Thank you. Yeah, it's looking really good. Thank you very much. And I've got a few bits, if that's all right, just drop them if that's good to run through it. And page eight, we've said, we want to help make sure everyone in Devon stays healthy and happy. Do you think we can say happy? It's, you know, we don't have control over that. I just wonder if there's a perhaps a less fluffy way of saying happy is that, you know, it's, it's important to be of wellbeing. I get that, but you know what I mean? Happy is a little bit of a fluffy one, perhaps.
Yeah, I hear that.
Is that all right?
Yeah, definitely.
Sorry.
No, no.
The consultation, I know you said it's live. It's not on the Have Your Say Live yet. Is that, that's under control, is it?
And it should be. And if it's not, it will be.
Not when I look just then. And where will that be promoted? That's.
So yeah, just to come in on that particular point. So I think immediately we'd be cascading that out through the VCSE assembly, through our kind of partner organisations. So the stakeholders of which I think we engaged around 130 through the event, we put it out through their networks, also through the local care partnerships locally. And I think within our own organisations as well. So just looking at different ways we can do that really. And another thing to note is that it would be an item at the VCSE assembly meeting next week. So we can use that as an opportunity to shout out to people and see if they'd want a bit of a further discussion as well as looking for those opportunities to kind of share it via different forums. So the local care partnership meetings, for instance, we've got it tabled to each of those. So there's a reminder as well as the email communications that should go out. And yeah, I'll double check and make sure that's all up there as it should be. It was due to go live at two. So yeah, hopefully.
I'm sure it will.
It's there or thereabouts, or we can just push it along just to make sure it's out.
So if I can just come back. So one of the things that I'm getting pressure on in, in the send world in particular is engagement of families and being really meaningful engagement. And, you know, I do think perhaps we need to absolutely go out there and contact parent groups, even if they're informal ones on Facebook, you know, but really getting out there and, and shouting about things so that they don't find it out through third party things or, you know, or when it's about to close or something, because it just adds fuel to the fire. So yeah, if we can be really proactive, I'd be grateful. Thank you.
Just to comment on being proactive, it was clearly mentioned in the workshop that we had that there was going, we're going to work with VCSEs. What I didn't want to do is duplicate the efforts that are already taking place, but at the same time, use those existing conduits to get engagement rather than try and reinvent the wheel. So I'm very much wanting to use the existing networks and contacts that exist rather than trying to create something totally new. Because I see that's duplication and complexity that we perhaps don't need. But I absolutely agree. It's got to be promoted in the right way and we've got to listen to those groups and those people that hold those attentions of those particular groups. We need to work with them very clearly to make sure that we get this out and about and make sure it's understood. So thank you.
Absolutely agree with that. Sorry, could just come back to that, about that. It's all of these things that we do like this, have an opportunity to then build that network even further. So perhaps in a, in the introduction of it saying, you know, this is, this is the method that we've chosen to cascade it. I think that's absolutely right, what you're saying. You want them to, to push it out from their end to everybody, don't we? So yeah, you can't go around chasing everyone. I absolutely appreciate that. Thanks.
Tandra, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. So just to say in terms of the way it reads and everything, excellent. I quite like an acronym. I think that kind of stays in your mind. And somebody's made a suggestion in the chat, I see, about how you might still retain the C at the start. I'm not saying that's the one to go for, but I think that's worth it. And I can see there's been some further work since the initial draft. So I'm really pleased to see that all age approach. I suppose getting into the action plan when it, when it happens, I suppose that's what I'm interested in. So the, the two things for me, so one of our heart biggest challenges, I think, from an adult's perspective, but I suspect for a young person is that social isolation and loneliness. And so I'd really like to understand what are the, what are the actions that we are going to take to try and address that? We've got a particular, you know, obviously a large rural area, particular focus around unpaid carers. So that's a challenge. And then I suppose the other thing, which was a priority for the previous health and wellbeing is the dementia. So I think you, you've got it in there. So thinking in that prevention space and you're sort of making the arguments in here about how do you help people adjust to changes in their life. So I think for me, it's a really good job. And what I'm interested in is the next phase, which is what are the actions going to look like? And then what is, what does that look like in terms of delivery? How, how will that work? Are you seeing there being different organisations taking a lead because that's part of their work programme? Or is there going to be some engagement proactive work from the Health and Wellbeing Board, you know, subgroups or whatever?
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, just to say on that healthy ageing front, yeah, we kind of included some elements. I think there's a further discussion to be had to do that even more systematically and better through the report. So yeah, we're going to pick those conversations up both in our social care team, but also looking across the NHS and partners, including HUK Devon as well in that mix, just to make sure, as that didn't kind of come through as a priority, but it does fit in with that kind of wider principle. So yeah, the action plan, I think is going to be a really important point where we can draw those points together. So I think there's a little bit of a kind of phasing. So we've got those kind of three things which come with the strategy and alongside the strategy, which are that action plan, the partnership map and the scorecard. I think the partnership map is something we do, I think, and launch alongside the strategy in January. So that's all about kind of mapping those kind of relationships out for those strategies and really highlighting where we've got those strategic alignments. So I think that's going to be very useful feeding into that kind of process anyway. We're looking at probably from that January point, forming together and looking at forming together that action plan, which I think, yeah, could definitely relate to things which organisations are already doing in that space, but also things the board might be driving. So I think there's probably a little bit of work to do. And I think we can do that partly when we're finalising the strategy and we have a board workshop in December to do that. Where we can think about exactly how we do that. But some sort of subgroup arrangement to how those are managed would seem quite a logical approach really. So that can definitely come in at that stage. And I think the action plan and the scorecard can follow sort of April onwards really is a way to kind of really take things forward. Which yeah, I think would kind of line up quite nicely with that. There's also some very good action plans out there, whichever areas have done. So Somerset, I think in their joint strategic, joint health wellbeing strategy did a really good job there. So I think we can look at some of those examples and look what we can borrow as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. And as ever, there's nothing more irritating than people coming in after you've done a really great piece of work and they're telling you what they don't like about it. So these are curious observations only. So I also like an acronym, but I guess I'm just curious about core, given the inequalities agenda and Core 20+ and the, and the danger of in this agenda there being a bit of confusion. So again, irritating to tell you that now, sorry. The second more general point is, is when I read it as a, trying to, as a citizen rather than as a, as a professional, I suppose that the the context, I'm curious about some of the context around particularly financial sustainability and why we are needing to do things differently and, and more connectedly together. And indeed why we might, we might not, well, the danger of our citizens coming out with a shopping list and then sort of having to say, well, that's lovely. Yes, we agree, but we're not spending any, we can't spend any money. So I'm curious about where that conversation happens to frame the, that a lot of the decisions that we make are the right decisions and will save us money. But there are some decisions that will be more difficult. And then the last peeve is just around, given the 10 year forward plan, describing NHS as a place where we deal with ill health, perhaps needs to be a bit reframed as well. Because I think that that, that our coming together in this space for me is around neighbourhoods, isn't it? And integrated neighbourhood teams. And therefore there's a danger that we will just be left in health to do the ill health bit, which I think is not where we're trying to focus and certainly where our strategy will not be pointing towards.
No, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Sorry, I want just to, listening very carefully to your words. It's very, very important. So we've, you've picked up about core. The other one that was really important there is about some of the financial discussions. It really is critical that those organisations that have responsibility for those financial budgets undertake those budgets, because that's not within our, it's not within my or this board's remit in any way. However, if there is a way that we could influence or suggest a possible improvement in the way that that budget is allocated, and we might be talking about very small items, we might be saying the budget's perfect and it could well be, but sometimes it's not. Then we could perhaps come to this environment, this forum, to discuss how we might make those, those improvements. So it really would be for me, as Chair, would really like to be able to flush out where there are some of those items which could be improved and have a, and have a real strategic discussion about how those might play out in the future, how we might do something a little bit different to support the inequalities, et cetera, that we're trying to achieve. So I really would like this to become a forum where the inter-party, inter-communit, inter-strategic partners come together and we discuss where we can do further improvements that can probably only be achieved by this particular group. So that would be my desire for this particular board.
If I may just respond to that Chair, I can, because I think one of the things that I've, I have observed in, in an environment of financial constraint for all public services is that we end up in a tit for tat situation rather than saying, I say, I can't afford that anymore. So I'm going to, the cost will go over there. And over there says, well, we can't afford it either. So the cost will go over there. And I think it's really important for us to have that discussion that says, there is a single pot of money, we might all own it on behalf of our population. But how do we come to a consensus that this is the right approach, even if it means a, a potential detriment to how, to our own organisation, reputation or indeed budget? And I think that that's, that that would be the power of some of these discussions.
I agree. It'll be a difficult discussion, but I think we've got to have it somewhere. And I would prefer to have it in a strategic level of partnerships than let it manifest itself into a poorer outcome than would be possible if we talked to each other. So thank you. I really appreciate your points. Councillor Jackie Hodgson.
Sorry, I took my hand down, but actually I was just going to say, I think this is really well laid out. It's really clear. I do still have a thing about children's services. I mean, in terms of like youth services, so like, because a lot of the time they're often dealing with problems. And I think this is taking a step back from that. We're trying to say health and wellbeing, great for everybody. But for me, looking at the way that we can actually have youth services somehow or another. And I think if we don't ever name it, they tend to get forgotten. But I think youth services, opportunities for young people, you know, in their sort of, especially, you know, around their puberty years, when they're switching from schools, primary school to secondary school, very delicate years and it's an opportunity to make friends rather than have to rely on sort of face, Facebook and phones. I think is where, where I have a really strong view that a lot, a lot of the young people's problems kick off then. And they aren't in places that they can have trusted youth workers to talk to and just do easy stuff with mates. And I think that we, that's the really big bit that I feel just coincides so clearly with when children's, when youth services, universal access, youth services were taken away in 2013 by this count, by Devon County Council. And I, you know, the correlation is very strong. And I have spoken to quite a few people about this. And I think it's something I'd like to really see named somewhere in this to make people think, oh yeah, we could do that. Because if it's not there, you know, it tends to just get forgotten about.
Thank you. Well said, Jackie. Does anybody want to respond to those comments? In that case, then I move on to the next point, a question which I think comes from Steve.
Thanks Jed. And just a couple of comments from me. Firstly, thanks Eleanor and Simon. I think it's probably the, the most inclusively written strategy I've read for many, many years. I think it's probably the, the most inclusively written strategy I've read for many, many years. And I guess there's the, the challenges, isn't it? The simplicity of trying to write it, Peter, you kind of fall into the trap of trying to make it easy by saying that NHS primarily deals with sick. I absolutely agree with you. We want to shift that towards prevention. I guess the pushback will be, show where's the budget spent. And, and but, but yeah, so there's something about the simplicity and I actually, I really like it. It's a bit, it makes me twitch a little bit because it's been so long since I've read some of our acronyms in, but that's about me, my strategy and who it speaks to. I guess the couple of points being one is around the consultation and it speaks to previous points around, is it trying to do all things to all people? And I think, I think for me, the devil's going to be in the detail, isn't it? And it picks up the point, picks up Jackie's point, I think, a little bit as well in terms of the action plans. So, you know, when we start to think about those four priorities, there's a lot of work happening in that space, whether it's mental health, housing, for example. I think the bit, bit of work we're going to have to do is to really distill what is it we're going to do as a board? Where do we bring that uniqueness? And picking on Peter's point earlier, I think part of that will be around some of those wicked issues where budgets, responsibilities sit with all of us, but none of us. And it speaks to your point, Peter, around actually, well, we're going to retract our budget in this space because it's tangential to what we do. But in essence, we've squeezed the balloon and it's popped up somewhere else. I think they're the issues which are going to surface for us. I think if you think about the best start in life, we have an early year strategy. We have a lot of work taken on that space. So what, what's our uniqueness as a board to operate in a space which is about best start in life? And there will be things which fall out of, well, that's something to do about us, a small year really. Well, it's not really our main job, is it? And I think those are the real sweet spots. We've got to, we've got to pull out and not duplicate or step on their toes or try and do what, what is happening goes well. Similarly for housing or for those, I think we, we kind of committed that, didn't we? We, what are those wicked issues which only we can kind of surface? So the devil's going to be in the detail. And I think once we've done the consultation, we can come back and play back to us. Okay. And the big topic called best start in life or the big topic called housing or mental health, our uniqueness, our bits, our A, B and C, because the rest of it's taken place out with, and we might want to have a watching brief on that or to be curious about that. But we can add value here and that's going to be the bit for us. And that's the challenging bit, but also the exciting bit for me. Because I think that's the bit that's been lacking as a system. So, you know, I really welcome it. And just one very technical question, presumably as a strategy, we're going to be a PDF version as well as a web based version, isn't it? So we can do hyperlinks and we can, yeah, I thought it would be. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. I really appreciate the comments about uniqueness, that we have to be unique. So that speaks to not duplicating, not being overly complex. And that speaks to the fact that this, I would plan in the future that we have 45 minute sessions to discuss real meaty subjects, which are those items that need to be discussed at a strategic level. And we also have a duty to make sure that the, we're not missing anything and that we main, there is a maintenance of services and quality. When that happens, obviously those subjects need to go to ONS or be suggested to ONS for them to decide whether they wish to pursue them or not. But we would very much welcome working closely with ONS to ensure that we make sure those items are covered quite clearly. So thank you. If there are no more questions, I don't see anything. Ah, sorry, Denise.
Sorry. And I'm really interested in the partnership map because that came up this morning in family hub meeting. And firstly, is there anything else like that being done already? What would be the remit of it? How wide would it go? And is it going to be like an updatable thing? You've got an idea in your head and that's going to be a massive job. So lots of questions about that.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I think it's probably start with the broad strokes and developers we go really, because yeah, it could be very vast. And yeah, I think setting that scope is going to be important. I think in the first instance, it'd be kind of mapping out some of those key partnerships, their strategies, those points of connection. So we can certainly do that. And you can certainly look at those kind of cross memberships. I think, yeah, there, there is probably something around starting from a point and then kind of looking at how far you take that in terms of looking at those different areas. It'd probably be as well focused very strongly in those four priority theme areas as well. So yeah, painting the whole map of the kind of wider system, I think, will be probably a little bit beyond. But I think we can certainly cover those broad strokes in the first instance and certainly iterate and develop it going forwards.
Can I just come back on that? With the, all these things, as soon as you produce them, they can be out of date. So is it going to be something that will be flexible in that term, updatable?
Yeah. So I think the aim there, so with the strategy, it's a PDF this time round. But at the formal launch of the strategy in January, that would be put online. So that means it's something we can kind of update. So the partnership map, I think, will sit within that space and will be dynamic and something we can kind of update and make sure is maintained as well. Again, getting the kind of right level of detail is going to be important. So it's not a sort of colossal task to keep it updated. But if we, if we've got the main partnerships, if we've got the main priorities and we've got the main themes in there, that should be perfectly manageable.
Thank you. And I see there's a question from Sarah at Alice Watch.
Thank you. I agree with others, what they said in the room today. I think the document reads, it's very clear. I'd be very interested in the action plans, how we're going to follow this through. And in particular, you mentioned, Steve, about duplication. There's an awful lot of intel, insight, feedback and work already happening in a lot of these spaces to make sure we draw on that. I was interested in the engagement aspect of this report and it's great that you are already working with the Devon VCSE Assembly because that's going to reach, you know, a cross section of our community. Obviously from Healthwatch's point of view, we're happy to cascade that through our networks, our assists, our community listeners. But I just want to sort of check on the accessibility formats of this, although it's clearly written. Will it be accessible for all in our community in different languages, easy read, et cetera? So everyone can engage with it.
So I think the final strategy, part of the reason to have it is a HTML webpage format will be to increase accessibility. With the past strategy, we've done easy read versions. So I think we would repeat it with this, definitely. That would be, I think, the final strategy. So that would be kind of around January time. So yeah, we'd definitely look to do that. In terms of other languages, I think the point is being put on the website that, to request that information. So again, we'll do the same this time around and make that kind of option available.
Thank you. And finally, Richard.
Thanks, Chair. I don't want to duplicate what's already been said, but Stephen and Peter really touched on it, citizens. You know, what, how do they read this? And for me, I put myself in that position. It reads really well. And don't knock yourself, again, Somerset, ignore them, carry on with the work that you're actually doing. It's absolutely marvellous. It was so easy to read for me. So, you know, and of the four themes, you know, housing, I think is going to be the biggest thing in the future for us. And that'll be when we're all in the unitary or unitaries, that connection will really come into play. And I look forward to that time. Actually, I want to jump a couple of years ahead to, to be in that space. But thank you ever so much. Fantastic work.
Thank you. So can we take this forward then to approval? So the recommendation is to support and promote the consultation through their networks, your networks and organisations, and to contribute to the finalisation of the strategy. That's how I understand how the recommendation is read. Could I have a proposer and a seconder? And Richard, you're happy to second and a vote. Right, that motion's carried. Thank you very much. Brilliant. So thank you very much for that. And thank you Sonia and Simon for your hard work, but you're not off the hook yet. So next we have ways of working and the recommendation is board to discuss and agree ways of working, action plans set out and, and use alongside the new health and wellbeing strategy to guide board activities in 2026 onwards. So this is about ways of working and the action plan. And I hand back to Simon.
Thank you. So I'll just chat you briefly through the paper and then we can open it up for discussion. So this paper really summarises the work which has happened this year on ways of working and sets up proposed action plan for the board to consider. So in terms of the context, the origins of this is in the board development work supported by the local government association, which concluded in March 2025. And you'll see on the first page of the report there, the book points there highlighting some of the recommendations, some of the kind of themes coming out from those discussions in terms of what the board should take forward. And some of those relate to the development of the strategy, which of course we've already been through. But others relate to how the health and wellbeing board operates. So this paper very much covers that. So almost the two things we presented are kind of companion pieces, as it were. And those ways for working discussions also happened alongside the development of the joint health and wellbeing strategy. So at the August Board Member Workshop and then at the September Stakeholder Conference, we had dedicated table discussions and went into some detail, both across board members, but also across the kind of wider stakeholder network as well. So section three covers some of the insights from that stakeholder conference. So this is very much where the board tested and refined those proposed ways of working principles with partners and the wider community. And you'll see at the top of page two, the broad questions that were kind of asked within that around how the board best engages with citizens and communities and brings lived experience to the board, how the board should develop that wider stakeholder network and what changes should be made to the way board meetings operate. So through those stakeholder discussions, you'll see four sections there which summarise what came through those discussions and themes there. So representation, lived experience, there's real emphasis there on the board properly listening and having a kind of genuine, rather than a tokenistic approach to how that lived experience is brought into the board. And the last sentence there around the shift from one-way listening to relational, two-way dialogue to walk with communities, I think, puts that point very well. In terms of representation, equity and participation, there's kind of highlighting the discussion there around the kind of mapping of representation and spotting gaps and looking at how that reflected the population. And again, lived experience came up and avoiding those kind of five minute slots and allowing time and support to have a genuine dialogue there. Picking on Sarah's point from previous discussion, using what we already know is really important here. So there's been great work done right across the piece. And a lot of things we can gain from, from local agencies who work in this space, a couple of which are named in this point. So, and I think the final sentence in that point, VCSE and local partners must be recognised as co-leaders, not just delivery agents. I think it's quite an important one from those discussions. So building into the ways of working action plan, so this is really a synthesis of everything from that local government association development work right through to that stakeholder conference. And that's pulled out in four themes with actions against each of those themes, which are on kind of pages three onwards within this paper. So the first of those is rebuilding the board's purpose, role and culture. So you'll see that emphasis on the board being a partnership board, not just a committee. So work on terms of reference potentially there, setting that kind of clear vision which links across to both the strategy and the action plan. And then embedding those principles around asset-based community development and building on strengths rather than deficits. In terms of the second block there, strengthening, strengthening community engagement and communication of genuine lived experience and representation. You'll see reference there to mapping that representation, going to where the voices are. So holding events, listening sessions and not just using county hall as the site for those, communicating what the board is and what the board does. So looking at the kind of communication side of that and how stakeholders are involved in that. So, and that builds into that, you said, we did type of approach. So going to the third category there, that's reforming board meetings to be more effective. So you'll see the RACI format there or framework, which is about having clear designation of who is responsible and what things are coming for approval, where the board might be a consultee or just for information. So using that sort of framework to clearly designate the ask of board is kind of highlighted there. Having that kind of cover sheet for reports and presentations is also there. Looking at holding meetings in community venues, which could well match with the subject being discussed, was another thing which is formed in those actions. And redesigning that agenda structure. So you have that ability to have that much deeper discussion and action orientation, particularly around those items which require board approval or which the board's driving. So much less about things coming from information, more about things coming for action. And then potentially also looking there at pre-meeting, task and finish group type activities. And also producing and sharing easy to read meeting summaries. The final block layer is around improving governance decision-making and accountability. And again, this links across quite nicely to the strategy and that's about clarifying those roles and mandates, assigning board members as champions for those priorities and themes within the strategy. And then tracking progress through dashboard, which will be developed alongside that strategy and ensuring the strategy is accessible to residents across Devon. So that kind of pulls it all together there. And as noted, the recommendation is to discuss and agree the action plan. So yeah, I don't have a discussion. Thank you.
Happy to open the discussion to the floor. I think, Richard, you were just about to.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things that jumped out at me straight away was something you've been talking about, Chair, and moving the meetings to community venues. Just like to explore that a bit more.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's something which has come out right from the discussions with the local government association and has certainly kind of resonated very well through those kind of stakeholder engagement sessions. I think a committee room space, this space can be very formal, very stuffy. So I think there was a recognition that actually breaking down those formal walls and going to spaces where people are in the community and particularly in locations which link across to the priorities in the strategy and things the board want to kind of champion and do is really important there. That's probably as far as this stage as the exploration has got. So I think there's probably things to work for as well, work through there as well in terms of how that might practically work, which we can kind of look to legal and democratic services colleagues on. But it's certainly something which resonates very well with, yeah, board stakeholders.
Richard, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to, just going to welcome the, the getting out there in the community and using, as using part of our locating this board out in the community as part of the stakeholder process, or maybe a highlight or deep dive into something. And I was reading the, reading the part here about looking at strength in the community rather than deficits. But also maybe use that as a process of working out through those strengths where, where, where the deficits are. I mean, I, I visited a Beaver Lodge last night and, and I was thinking, thinking through in the context of this and what Jackie said earlier about, about youth services more generally, seeing the, the demand out there for, as I think our young people in Devon have said, said already and put as one of their priorities, places to go and things to do. Loads of demand for, for, for those, those evening activities, loads of support from the local community. And then some of the things which are blockers in that, in the case of last night, the, the age of the building and making that accessible to all. So you can get more people involved. So just welcoming getting out there in the community and maybe doing a deep dive into some kind of project as well as citing our, our board meeting in a certain location would be really interesting. Thank you.
Please go ahead, Peter.
Thanks. And, and I'm not going to express a contribution to, to colleagues who come before me. But I suppose it, it's an addition, which is why, because it's easy for us to just have a change of venue and it not make a difference. You know, it's, it's easy to be visiting the zoo and looking and going away and thinking, I've done my trip to the zoo. So for me, it's more about how, you know, does that bring the voice of our citizens into our discussion anymore than actually a different way? So I suppose that it's a provocative thought. It is, it is no more than a challenge to thinking, I guess. The other point that I wanted to make was, you know, picking up again on your, words are really important to me. So forgive me. I, I tend to hold people to account for them. So you said not just. I, I tend to hold people to account for them. So you said not just a committee and that, that, that led me to a, does that mean not a committee or not, or is a committee plus? And, and I think particularly then the, if we are, if we are serious about the purpose of the committee driving the strategic aim set out in the health and wellbeing strategy, then the agenda needs to be very much focused around the priorities in that strategy. And, and, and that led me to think, well, the update that I'm bringing today has bears very little relation to the strategy whilst I recognize it's in draft. And so this is an iterative process. And my last point then was, well, if I don't bring it here, where do I bring it to if it's important? So, so I, I guess these are more thoughts for the work plan rather than they are thoughts for now.
So very good questions, Peter, and I'm, I am listening very carefully. So why the different location? I think the, the conference that we had off-site, twenty different organizations, over fifty people broke down the barriers and created an environment in which people could pipe up, speak up. They could actually say what they were thinking and didn't feel the, the, the event was creating an environment in which they perhaps might not speak so freely. So we learned a heck of a lot by changing the venue. But we do have to think carefully what those venues are going to be. So there was a, the engagement that we got through changing the venue seemed to be, I was really surprised by the feelings that came back in the room. So I would like to be able to learn from that and make sure that we do do this in the right way. And mentioned about, I think the word partnerships came into the second point that you just raised. And the role of a commi- committee versus that, a, a, a partnership, organization or partnership group. So trying to make sure that there's a right level of approvals and et cetera that need to take place. So the, the J S N A, the, the pharmaceutical review absolutely got to be done in the right way. But it's also an opportunity in which to have those discussions at partnership level, which are meaningful. And, and that comes to identifying where the gaps are. If there's something that isn't quite right, working as well as we think it could do, let's have a meaningful discussion about that rather than receiving a finalized report. So there can be an exchange of views. And this was about finding ways that we could improve what we do already. But we might be surprised that a third party has a different view of the way we could improve. And it may just fit with the priorities of that particular group and they learn something new, we do something better. So I'm trying to make sure that we have good space on the agenda for those partnership discussions. And some of those need to take place in committee, but some of them need to be full and frank discussions where we're airing different aspects and challenging each other, like you are doing now in a really, really healthy and good way. More of that discussion so that we can work out how we might create solutions is exactly the environment that I would like to create in this particular board. And, and the last point about updates, I personally think that if there is an update, I would ask the question, so what? And the next question is, could I read about that? What I'm trying to do there is make sure that the agenda is focused on those parts that we need to, need to be consulted on or approve. And the agenda is focused on those things that we can deal with at partnership level. But if it's something that we can read, report, perhaps that could be moved to lower priority on the agenda or perhaps could be circulated outside the meeting. So we've got time to properly discuss what we want to discuss and try to get through to those solutions that only can be found at partnership level. It's my feelings.
If I might come back, because I, I recognize that my style sometimes will make it sound like I'm disagreeing with you and I'm actually violently agreeing with you. And I think that the, the conversation and, and the points are only ever to provoke. But I think that the, the one thing I would come back to, so your, your point at the beginning. So my challenge would be, was it the environment that made a difference or was it having fifty different groups in the group? Because, and it probably is both of those things, but the point I was trying to make, that, that just having a committee in a different location doesn't achieve as much as having lots of people or having a different style of meeting. And that was the point I was making.
I think very much noted. We, we do need to find the right balance. And yes, it was a different location, but it was the, it was the ability for the individuals to communicate. Anyway, I'll, I'll leave that to Simon and Eleanor to work out the machinations of how that might evolve over the next six months to a year. But thank you for your, and I don't take, the way you say things, absolutely fantastic. I've got, I don't, I prefer the discussion than to have it coded in some form to me and I don't realize. So thank you. Jackie.
Yeah. So, yeah, thank you. Very, it's interesting, the detail. And I, I pick up on the points that have been made about sort of going out to other places. But I think it's to get real value of those. And the model I would use is where I, many years ago, you know, relatively new as a councillor, where Devon used to do these highways meetings at the local level in various parish councils. It always seemed to be raining for some reason when they were held. I don't know quite why, but that was just what it was. But they did actually allow, they always had a bit of time during the meeting for everybody to have a cup of tea together. And it doesn't have to be necessarily anything spectacular. But I think that bit of opportunity for a bit of local networking, it actually really builds it, it put it, I think it, it makes good investment of the time spent of gathering that meeting together in the first place. Because at the end of the day, a lot of the time, what we really want is to, to drop drip things into the local community to have their sense of their, and their sort of advocacy. And in fact, you know, their hard work at the local level, you know, bringing things to us that matter and having the confidence. And by having those conversations themselves, you know, they often say that, you know, going to a face-to-face conference is more value than actually the bit of chat over a coffee than actually sitting in front, listening to what was being said. And I think this is where we can make the, you know, really good value of, of taking the trouble to go to outside to other meetings. That's just a point I wanted to raise.
Thank you, Jackie. Sarah.
Thank you. Just a couple of points were made, not as I agree with what most of everyone said. I just wanted to go back to the actual document itself. You mentioned in there, which I totally agree with, that we need to shift our focus to start to question ourselves, do we know if we're improving people's experiences? And I'm not sure in the actions below, that clearly is drawn out, whether that's under governance, accountability. And I, I think we just need to reflect on that and just make that a little bit stronger through the actions. Because our general public are exhausted of providing feedback and not seeing a difference. And I think that leads me on to the next bit, that when we do go out and engage at community level, we just need to make sure that's in a very integrated way, because I do not want to be following housing going out the week before. Our public are being asked to attend lots of different things, complete surveys. And I think we need to make sure we work in a more joined up, joined up approach when we go out and undertake that. Thank you.
Thanks. Just to come in on that point, I think that's probably a bit of an opportunity when we're looking at this scorecard and how we monitor the new strategy to actually bring in that question of do we know if we're improving people's experiences? And I think there could be qualitative information we collect there as well as the more numeric information. So, yeah, I think that's probably something we can start to explore in a bit more detail and have them do that better as well as reflecting on this document. So we have a look at this, but I think we can probably look at how we can do that within the strategy as well. So, yeah, many thanks for that. And, yeah, there's probably something around that forward planning of agendas and making sure it's lining up and where possible synchronizing with other activities. So, yeah, you're only kind of asking once or you're aligning with some work which is already happening or you're seizing those opportunities to, yeah, do things in a much more coherent way. So I think that can definitely be built in as well going forwards. Thank you.
Richard.
May I just come, come back on the point because it was a really, really good one about, about asking, asking the questions too many times and doubling up and all the rest of it, but wondering if we could be even more radical on that in, in fitting in with somebody else's agenda. So if we know what's happening out there in the community and there's an event happening, we'll go, we'll go to youth services just because we were, we were on that. And I think we've got that in the reform the board meetings part of the papers, but also if, if someone in the community is holding an event where our, happening to have our, our, our board meeting in their location at a similar time, maybe before, and then getting the opportunity to meet with people locally who've been doing something great in their community that could be copied, rolled out, fed off each other. That would be even better than trying to line up with our own things as it were. Thank you.
Thank you. That's an excellent dialogue. Sonia, please go ahead.
Thank you. And I've really enjoyed the discussion so far and they are related, aren't they? That what we're going to do and how we're going to do it are very relevant. Just building on that last point. I think the sentiment that sits behind the partnership rather than committee bit is, I think we will have the opportunity to think about how we take responsibility as individual partners and organizations around this agenda and how we change, change what we do, create greater connection, you know. If we're having that conversation, let's have it once, let's do it together. And I think that's a lot of what was sat behind the sentiment of what Simon was just talking to about the way we work. Yes, there's some details about where, how, et cetera, but I think I didn't want to lose the, the spirit of collaboration that was really in that engagement and in that conference. You know, people want to do something different, better and make it meaningful. So I just, yes, there's details, but we'll learn and adapt as we go along, I'm sure. But I got a real signal that people want to do something different and do that together. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Sonia. I'm really appreciated. So, so moving to the point now, I see there's no more questions. We've got quite a lot of feedback on the ways of working. So it feels to me that we've got something here, but it needs more work. So I'm, I'm going to suggest that we would approve, subject to the comments from each individual around the table, being incorporated into the ways of working. So I don't necessarily want to bring it back again, but I'd like to bring it back and make sure that the comments are incorporated. Now, if we feel comfortable with that, would, would we be able to have a proposer and a seconder? So the, it's what's written on the paper and what's written on the paper is, board to discuss and agree ways of working, action plan set out and use it alongside the joint health and wealth, wealth being strategy to guide board activities. And the adjunct to that is, adding to that is, it's approved, subject to the comments that were made in this room being implemented in the ways of working.
With that, Chair, if, if you're happy to propose our second.
I'll propose that then. Seconded. Please, could we have a vote? Thank you. Carried. So now we move on to the review of board activities from 2020 to 2025. And this was a, a request to see what we've actually completed over the last five years. And I've got to say, I was really happy and pleased to see the different broad range of activities that the Health and Wellbeing Board has been, had some responsibility for or touched. It really made, made it feel very substantive. And, and I'd like to see that we're able to go through this and, and understand how we might be able to communicate what the board has done in the past to our various stakeholders. Thank you. Over to you, Simon.
Yes, thank you. I won't say a huge amount on this because it's kind of here for you all to see. But yeah, very much a kind of summary of those main things over the past five years. So we have a little bit around what's changed since 2022, acknowledging some of the kind of shifts we see more widely in society. But within that kind of section, we've also looked in detail at the health and well, health and wellbeing strategy outcome indicators and seen how they have changed over the last five years. So that's looking at measures which have improved or worsened over that time. And also kind of looked at how much influence we might have within our respective organizations over those areas. Notwithstanding, there'd be a lot of external influences which will kind of affect outcomes for people. So, yeah, that's, that's first sections and that's there for everyone to see. Carrying on, we have on the kind of third page of the report, the actions and achievements relating to the strategy, which are themed around the different priority themes there. So we've got four sections in that table. And then we've got bullet points which highlight activities which relate to the priorities and sub-priorities there. So again, I won't read these out in detail, but in the paper, there's a, there'd be links in for further information against each of those, including the strategies and the documents and things they refer to. But very much it will kind of pick up a lot of those local partnerships and community programs which have been in place. It'd be the commissioning and planning of services around some of those partners and those cross-cutting themes. And there's a big focus, I think, throughout on prevention and addressing inequalities. It's a mix of things which a board might have driven, but also things which the board's constituent organizations have done relating to those priorities. The final section is looking at some specific areas in a little bit more detail. So that will kind of tease out some particular actions for which the board has been responsible and how those have contributed. So again, I won't read these out in detail, but you'll see kind of reference to the kind of mental health prevention concordat, the recent work in terms of age-friendly communities and applying to sign up to the age-friendly communities network, the role the board had through the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as how the board has helped the system to kind of shape the integrated care plan and also develop the joint strategic needs assessment. So yeah, that's all in there as well. So I won't say any more than that. It's all there to see. But one reflection I will take is that with the new strategy and that kind of focus on the action plan, it should give us more kind of dynamic way of being able to check on board progress throughout the life of the strategy. So rather than just doing a piece of this at the end, it's probably one we can reflect on. And I think put in a bit more regularly going forwards. Thank you.
So having looked at this, I think it's, it's really, I would like to make sure that as we go through the life of our strategy, that we have a regular update on achievements, where we stand. What I like about the report that's been written is we've got the direction of change. We know what's, what's worked well, but we also know what's worsened. So we can begin to proactively respond to those areas which are trending away from us. So on the first one, where we've got high levels of influence, feeling supported to manage their own conditions, re-enablement, a re-abatement coverage. So it's really good to see those kinds of comments. And therefore that gives me questions to ask about how we might improve those, those processes. And again, this might be form, as a result of that, an item for one of those forty-five minute sessions that we have at this meeting to see how we could work with all the agencies together to be able to improve that outcome and that, that part. So I think it's really truly important that we have a scorecard and that we monitor and that we, we proactively do something about it. So I'd, I'd like to see this on a frequency that is meaningful, but not onerous. And that we're able to sort of read this. Might not be a central part of the agenda because we can read it before the meeting. But if there's an issue that's coming up, then we need to discuss it in the meeting. Thank you. And Jackie, you were first.
Yeah, thank you. On that first page, I think we would sort of assume is like the, sort of like the overall kind of message that we want to get out there. But it's not until you get actually into the detail of the report, it talks about issues for mental health in young people. For me, that's one of the most, you know, really, really worrying elements. And I would have expected to see that on there and showing how it has gone downhill. I know a lot of it is attributed to COVID, et cetera. But I do think it's a really serious issue because it's like these are people who've potentially got a huge amount of their lives ahead of them. And I would have thought that would be sort of somehow shown as being something that we really need to, you know, should be a very important issue for us to be dealing with. And I think to some extent it is, but it doesn't seem to be shown in there. So I would hope going forward, we would see probably actually a more detailed report, some, maybe some better comparative graphs and things. This seems, feels a bit broad brush and it's picking up certain things, but it's, and it's really hard to get a real sense. And since, you know, when you actually know things behind it, that should be sort of like, you know, showing red flags. They don't seem to be showing the red flags that I would have thought I would have expected to see.
Thank you, Jackie. And well noted. I'm sure that Simon will be looking very carefully at the design. Over to you, Simon.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, totally take that on board. And I think this is very kind of broad level because it kind of covers the five-year period and those things which have changed. What I will say is with the new strategy and the use of the action plan and the scorecard, we can really we can really actively monitor those issues. I think, yeah, mental health needs come out kind of loud and clear. And that's why that's kind of emphasized as one of those four priorities in the draft strategy. And yeah, I think that's probably one of the strongest things we heard through the consultation, through the stakeholder engagement process, the importance of having kind of mental health front and centre. So totally taking that on board, and yeah, we can make sure that what we do on a more regular basis, we can really bring that to the fore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tandra.
Thank you, Chair. I suppose a couple of points. This is backward-looking, isn't it? So we're going to have new priorities. So I think that will pick up what the new balanced scorecard looks like. But noting the Chair's comments about wanting to understand, so for example, re-abatement is goal-focused, and so if you identify the right people who have potential to be re-abled, so somebody's had a fall, so they need some form of physical re-abatement, then that, you know, that's about identifying and working well with them to get them back and independent. And sometimes that doesn't always align in the right way with coverage. So what I was going to suggest is, if that is something, and obviously we've got a new strategy coming on board, so we might want to think about what's in here, what comes here and what doesn't come here, that you might want some further context, because we've got a whole new set of people around the table. And a lot of these indicators were set even before I joined Devon County Council, and I understand these because this is my business. But maybe new people to the table wouldn't. So I was going to just suggest, and other people might feel the same, that we have some context, so people understand how we arrived at those priorities, and then some explanation of why we've performed well in one but not in the other. So that was that comment. And then the third thing, I just, and it might be because it's not supposed to be in here, but we did have something around dementia diagnosis, but that's not in here. And is that because that wasn't in the balanced scorecard? It's just that when we've looked at performance reports before, we do get it, don't we? So it might be there's different things that we look at for different reasons.
Yeah, thank you. So in here, it's not all the indicators which were in the kind of previous outcomes framework. Those were those where we had the kind of greatest increases or decreases. So that's one which I think has stayed pretty constant, but you know, that in and of itself kind of represents a challenge, because we benchmark quite poorly on that as a kind of outcome indicator. So yeah, it's not in there because of that, but yeah, certainly as we're building a new scorecard, we can kind of make sure all those points are kind of, yeah, clearly in there.
So in terms of the design, I think the design has to rely upon existing data. I don't want to be inventing a new measure that crosses time and resources to be absorbed. And it does need to have context. I completely utterly agree with you, Tandra, on that point. And I do think that this report, or a variation of it, communication around what has been achieved in the last five years is important, that we, I use that phrase, "celebrate our success." Well, I really would like to be able to communicate that this board, prior to my joining, has done some absolutely fabulous work. So that is something we should get out there and say, "This has been done, and we're looking to do better in the next five years." It's a comfortable, it's a positive story, and right now we need positive stories for our residents to understand. And I would like to say, "This is moving in the right direction, we're doing the right kind of thing." I think, Peter, you're next.
Just a really brief, this is great, I think, you know, and I think that proactive setting a new strategy and being very clear at the outset what you are going to measure to describe success in a strategy really important. In this space, just two thoughts. One is, how can you be sure that what you've described here in impact actually made a difference to what are fairly broad outcome measures, aren't they? So, you know, and that's always going to be difficult. So I don't think there's a good answer to that, but I think trying to focus us all on what was the real impact of signing up to this thing or saying yes to that or saying no to that, also really important. And then secondly, I guess, again, and the NHS particularly is very guilty of this being very, we like to be only do, we only do things we can count. And I guess, you know, there is, you will come to know that I have an interest and a passion in the arts and the arts and health. And in the art sector, much more of an understanding, which there will be, you know, governments about social value. And I guess it would be really nice to see some measures perhaps of social value of some of the things that we do that may not have made a difference to the thing we're counting, but made a huge difference to our communities. So just a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I think this is kind of helping think through what a more regular update might look like. And there's something around this sort of actions and achievements work, which actually an annual review and refresh might kind of fit in quite nicely. So it's not something which comes back every time, but it's something which, yeah, gives you that opportunity to check in and, yeah, certainly drawing through some of those factors there, which we can do partly within that. But I think, again, we can reflect on potential, those social value measures as well within the scorecard as well. So I think there's potential. So as we look at how we monitor the new strategy, yeah, I think we can start to build those elements in, for sure.
Thank you. So the recommendation is board to note the progress, the actions and achievements over the last five years. And very much we've seen comments about how we'd like to shape and focus the future scorecard and achievements monitoring. So really good. Can I make a proposal that we accept the recommendation to note progress of actions over the last five years? And is there a seconder and a vote? Excellent. Thank you. So now we move on to the pharmaceutical needs assessment, 2025 to 28. Steve Brown, you take the floor, and the recommendation is the board to endorse, stroke approve, the PNA for Devon.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so a relatively short report. So board will be conscious that we agree this outside of this formal committee. So this is, I guess it's to formally endorse, that we endorsed it previously. But secondly, when we had the discussion, there was two key elements which came out, two recommendations. One was around the role of commercial viability and determinate appropriateness of establishing new pharmacies. So in essence, whereas kind of the market say there's a space here because it's potentially viable, and these are businesses after all, so one assumes that they're not going to put their hand up to think they are. It's a good business decision if they don't think enough clients, customers. And also then, how the board and wider partners can raise concerns or indeed suggestions around changing the pharmacy regulations. And it's pretty timely, given some of the national news over the last week or so, and some of the local news, in fact, over the last week or so around the ability to have a sustainable pharmacies throughout Devon. So my understanding is collective work, Chair, with the local pharmaceutical committee and Dave Beerman and colleagues, who are doing some piece of work to work out who and how best to communicate the ask of those changes of regulations. I guess it's probably, to be honest, above our pay grade and nationally. But it'd be helpful, you know, the board, you know, in our deliberations, thought that'd be really a critical thing to do. So make sure the white words land on the right people. So we're waiting for them to give us that feedback. So it's a bit of, just to remind the board, we agreed this outside of the particular board, and those were the two key areas we highlighted with those actions around seeking guidance, around who and how we land those two messages. I think I've captured that, Simon, mainly. Yep, okay. Happy to take any questions, sir.
So thank you, and I appreciate. So the PSNA, we do need to endorse the PNA, the Pharmaceutical Needs Assessment for Devon. And therefore I would seek a proposal, a second for that. Is that correct?
Yeah, happy to propose it.
Okay, and a vote?
So may I ask a question before?
Yeah, sure.
About, Steve, it's probably a question to you, which, given what you've just alluded to in the national and local news about pharmacy at scale provision, and that this is a needs assessment, and that there is an effect particularly on Devon, a disproportionate effect. Do you think that that is adequately reflected in the thing that we are voting through now? Or does it need something else as a supplementary update?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, really good question, Peter, and kind of nod to Simon, who's got the right probably words of phraseology for this. But the difficulty, we've, not difficulty, the challenge we have is around, one would think a document would say whether or not we have sufficient or need more pharmacies in Devon and be responsive to, let's be honest, pharmacies merging or indeed closing, or indeed temporarily closing, is what you see. This is where the challenge kind of plays out, because it's not a, it's a tool to help the NHS decide whether or not there's a market for new pharmacies to come in, rather than the tool itself which says, "Yeah, and A," it's not some kind of algorithm that says the answer is, "We need another pharmacy in Sidwell Street," for example, which doesn't give you that level of detail. And the issue also, of course, is it's a moment in time. So things move on very swiftly, things change. But Simon, in terms of the clarification of where this document sits in the decision-making process, could you let Peter and others know?
Yeah, absolutely. So the pharmaceutical needs assessment is really just that kind of entry tool for kind of new pharmacies coming in. The criteria and what you're able to do within the pharmaceutical needs assessment is kind of fairly tight. So you can look at those gaps in provision, but it's not an assessment of the quality of services or any operational pressures, can you say, within them. So I think in terms of the PNA, it's been presented, it kind of really is for that kind of purpose, which is quite limited. I think the supplementary questions and the kind of statement which is being prepared by the local pharmaceutical committee and others is very much about kind of highlighting to government that, you know, outside of the scope of the PNA, there are challenges for kind of pharmacy provision. And actually, the kind of regulations which are in place more generally are probably from a bit of a different time. So that's about adding kind of local voices to kind of highlight those kind of important issues, which I think we probably see the brunt of in Devon, given some of our kind of demographics and our kind of service infrastructure, really. So yeah, I think the two things are kind of quite separate, but important that we kind of highlight the limitations, I think, of some of those regulations.
If I may just come back and explain, I guess, for me, the minutes of this meeting will reflect us signing off a document that says that there is adequate provision of pharmacy, at the same time as also describing a concern there isn't adequate provision of pharmacy. And that's the bit that I just want to make clear, that I'm more than comfortable that we are signing off a document that describes the provision in a moment in time, as long as that's, it's very clear about what we're signing off, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. So absolutely, we're signing up the PNA, which captures a moment in time around where we feel there's sufficient pharmacy access, but recognizing that actually some of the things and the fragility of some of the market is out of our control. And we often get contact from people who play back some challenges around operational. Pharmacy X has been shut for two hours because, or there's long waitings. That doesn't kind of play into the needs assessment, you know, it's about numbers of pharmacies. So the point around feedback nationally around the regulations and market entry is more about that part of it, the operational bit. How do you make sure there's enough pharmacists who get paid enough income so they can remain open? That's out of the scope of the pharmaceutical needs assessment. So two slightly separate but interlocking issues, which I can understand can cause confusion, but it's the PNA we're signing off today, and then separately going to champion, actually, how do we stabilise the pharmacies for a key primary care delivery of service?
So I know that there were two locations in the PNA that needed, were identified as needing pharmaceutical support, and that's recognized and reported within the PNA. And so therefore the ICB has the opportunity, and whoever it is that lets those contracts can then invite those groups to fill that gap. So the PNA is, as I'd identify those two gaps, and that's its job. What was brilliant about the discussion was that we wanted to go beyond just approving the PNA, that there was a desire to communicate beyond the scope of the PNA, beyond the scope of the Health and Wellbeing Board, two important messages about commercial viability, and the second one being the regulatory framework. And it is that wording that needs to be very carefully crafted with the right people in mind, so that it's sent to the right people, so it has an effect. So it was really good, the way that we, the group, were able to, one, identify the problem, and then also seek to find a solution or influence a situation which is beyond our control. So I'm happy with the way that worked. And it doesn't, it doesn't grate, in my view. I think we're doing something more than we were expected to do, which is good. Tandra? Yeah. So if we could do a vote on the PNA itself, so there was a nominated, a seconder, and then there was a vote. So that's carried. And then we moved on to the point about the additional messaging that we desire to undertake. And Tandra, you the mic.
It's a completely different question. There's been quite a lot in the chat about mental health and young people, and I'm sure it will be picked up afterwards. But Jackie's put quite a lot in there about things she would like to see. And I suppose I just wanted it acknowledged in the meeting that that information is in the chat, and it will be picked up in relation to the earlier, it's to do with the new plan, isn't it? Sorry, I just, I just, I thought it would be helpful if we acknowledged that she'd made a number of points and they were going to be followed up. And I think Maria has also added some to that as well.
Thank you.
So thank you. On that point, then, we move on to the NHS Devon update, and I hand over the microphone to Pete. Ah, Rich, sorry.
Chair, just on the pharmaceutical needs assessment, are we going to move forward with something additional to just passing the pharmaceutical needs assessment? Or, because I think there's some concern in the room.
Ah, okay. Steve, are you able to answer that?
Yeah, I think that once we get clarification from the local pharmaceutical committee experts around the wording, and the question then was, we have these concerns, how do we land them with whom? They're going to go away and come back and tell us the right people to land it with, so that we can get the biggest impact we could possibly have. So that what action will happen, but we're waiting for them to come back to us, my understanding.
Great, thank you very much.
So taking to the point, Tandra's comment about what's in the chat, to make sure that we take notice of that. And then the next question now is that we move on to Dr Peter Collins regarding the Devon Health and Wellbeing Update.
Thanks, Chair. And following your guidance, I will not read out the report and take it as read. I guess there are a couple of things that I would want to highlight. One around the ongoing organisational change and really to highlight the impact that that will have on the ICB's ability to do its business, and again, just some understanding of the difficulties with a prolonged restructure with no necessarily end in sight at the moment. The 10-year plan, I think we have covered before in this committee, but just an update on where we are. A slightly retrospective celebration that Devon as an ICB has come out of the recovery support programme, which is the national oversight framework for systems who are in either performance or financial difficulty. We've talked about strategy today, so I will reiterate the importance of a good and well-written strategy, the danger of having too many strategies and making sure that they are talking to each other and that they understand how they are distinct, but also the same. A big update, this and the subsequent paper about the provision of dental services and our approach to trying to increase, particularly in line with government direction and NHS England direction this year, the numbers of emergency dental appointments, but also recognizing that that's only one aspect to dental care. And it's really important to focus on prevention, which I know will be And it's really important to focus on prevention, which I know will be uh of interest to many around uh this table, but also the follow on of emergency appointments in terms of stabilization of uh dental disease. And then uh the last thing that I particularly wanted to focus on uh was around winter. Um it comes every year, the sun is shining today. But particularly to ask colleagues around the table um for their support and help in two main aspects. One is around reiterating to our population the importance of vaccination, both for themselves, if they are at risk their families, but also particularly for those who work in health and care, uh those who are eligible for vaccination. Uh I would point colleagues to the graph uh that shows an uptick. Uh I'm sure Steve will also may want to comment uh on uh flu cases at an earlier time in the year than we uh would have predicted. Uh now that is too early to say whether that will be material, but it is a reminder for everybody that the earlier we can vaccinate ourselves, the more protection we give to uh our communities uh over the winter period. Uh I think uh that is all I have to say in highlights. Happy to take questions.
I would say thank you, uh Peter, for such a a comprehensive um document. Um I would be delighted if I could receive this in a form that I could use with my district councillors and parish councillors. Because there is real interest in what's happening with dentistry. I really want to promote the COVID situation, the winter flu situation and make sure it lands with my residents that it's better to not end up in A and E and that they take the right preventative approach. So it would be really nice if I could receive this full circulation.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm just also um just on this, yeah, just on the vaccination point, I'd be um it would be remissly not to point out the great work that Sarah um and Health Watch did around exploring with our citizens uh the reluctance to uptake vaccines. And I think that that work in conjunction with this may help discussions for councillors with with citizens around the importance of debunking some of those myths uh around the dangers of vaccination and pointing out that the benefits to our population of vaccination far outweigh any risk, whether they are real or perceived.
And Steve.
Thank you, Chair. Just um I haven't been invited by Peter. Um just to give board um uh some assurance that certainly from a local authority perspective, as always, we uh encourage uptake of flu uh vaccinations for those who are eligible of general population. So we did a dizzy heights of Radio Devon last week, again, up up talking about the uh uptick in in flu and the pressures on the NHS, but also primarily one uh good IPC uh effective prevention control, washing your hands and and getting vaccinated. So those messages we are uplifting continuously both internally and externally with partners along with our NHS colleagues as well, as well as making sure all our staff groups which are eligible now access the flu jabs and they can and how they can do that. So we are doing all we can to uplift that. Generally, we have really good uptake, don't we, in terms of a health and care system? Um but we continuously have to kind of, you know, bang the drum on the importance of it.
Uh thank you. I I exemplify the um the importance of VCSEs. Those are point to areas of trust when people go into that community cafe or they go into that caring organization. And somebody says, oh, should I do this? And they go, yes, you should. It's that kind of discussion, which is really, really important. So it's having that discussion in those lo- local environments with those groups, which really puts the message across for those that might be hesitant. Peter.
Yeah, I'm just reflective of, you know, I I think we are moving into an era, aren't we, where the days of of the likes of you and I have been wheeled out onto TV and radio and and assuming that people listen to people like us um are are moving and we've got to start to think of who are those key opinion leaders, as you've just said. Um in our communities that we can support to give the right messages.
Jackie, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um I think, you know, we wonder why people aren't taking it up, I think, because the it's the flu jab is expensive, isn't it? And not the flu jab, the COVID clap jab. And I think what people are getting confused with is to which one's free and which one isn't. It's not because it's not fairly obvious one one is the other. But I think people just roll them up together because a lot of people had both jabs at the same time previously. And I think, you know, at the moment, there's a lot of people who probably need the jabs, who actually were just finding that twenty pounds, whatever it costs, is quite expensive.
I was looking at Steve to see whether I so I can answer that absolutely, cancer. And I think, you know, it's the changing uh the changing national needs assessment of who uh who would benefit from vaccination change with the evolution, particularly of COVID, in terms of of the the danger to our population from from uh being affected with COVID. So I I and I would fully understand that the the lateness of that information has caused confusion in our communities. And I think we must I would hope that that as the years go on, that message will become easier and more uh more predictable to understand. This year has, I feel, caused some confusion and I'm sure Steve will uh well, I'm not sure because I shouldn't speak for him, but would agree that, you know, it's really important that we try and message that there are people who are much cleverer than me, uh who are who determine at the population level the the benefits of any particular immunization on a on a yearly basis. Um but that can cause confusion if that message changes as it has done this year.
Just to iterate, I mean, there's certainly the message messages we put out are around if you're eligible for a free um immunization, whether that's COVID and or flu. And you should you should you should get it. We're not talking about uh and if you want it and you can afford it, go and get it. And that they're not the key messages. But clearly, as you say, Jackie, there will be some people who do feel for their own personal view that they want to get it. And but as um Peter said, the JCVI will look at a whole range of data and also the economic argument in terms of uh cost effectiveness. Sometimes it's it's late in the day and it just cause confusion. And most years are they in um those who are eligible and those who aren't can change. Um until you probably get back above seventy five, then you're probably always in. Um no one here, of course. Um so and cause confusion. So our message is always, you know, if you're entitled to the free free vaccinations, go and get it.
I was just saying that's, I mean, I think it's probably fairly obvious. That was probably just a reason. I wasn't sort of criticizing it particularly, but I just think it's a fact factor of the matter that, you know, we're sort of saying that not so many people are going for the jabs and, you know, I'll offer them something for nothing and they'll go. And if you're something they have to pay for, they'll sink ties and to some extent, it's as simple as that with some event, but it doesn't really help if it's actually affecting the population health, is it? So, yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. And if that's the island, so that item needs to be presenting officer. So it's that's an update. And the next one, so therefore it's been updated. The next one is uh the Better Care Fund from Solvay. The recommendation is to um or to approve the BCF twenty five, twenty six quarter one report.
Thank you. Yeah, that's absolutely right. So as as usual, the uh the requirement to submit the report fell outside of the uh uh timetabling of this meeting and that that always happens. Um we've tried to arrange it to to be different in the past and then gradually it gets out of date. However, as with lots of other areas uh that happens and we are allowed to submit the report and then seek retrospective approval. So if, for example, this board didn't agree the the approval, then that would get reported up and and we we would change the report. And so uh so it's the quarter one report. Um so sort of quite quite a lag in reporting, even if we even if we're reporting in in August, but uh the headlines are, so it's about you'll see because it is quarter one, there's not a huge amount of information there in the first quarter. Um so it was submitted on the fifteenth of August and it's telling it's telling us that uh as a system we're on track to meet our targets for reducing emergency admissions and reducing discharge delays. But we're not on track to meet the target for long term admissions to care homes. However, we do think that we will be back on track for that final target about care homes uh by the end of quarter four. The reason we report on those are because that, you know, firstly, that's that's the key things we're we're required to report on uh nationally. Um but the reason we report emergency admissions is because the BCF should be allowing us to invest in services that would keep uh support people at home, so avoid unnecessary admissions to hospital. If we're getting that kind of community and out of hospital support right, we should see uh we should be able to keep on top of the number of people going into hospital that wouldn't otherwise need to go there. We look at discharge delays because we don't want people to stay in hospital for any longer than they need to be in there. So as soon as they're ready to go, we need to make sure that we've got the right support in the community to help them to come out on time. And we measure residential admissions because uh we would aim to support people in their own homes for as long as possible, to live independently at home, right up to the end, if at all possible. It shouldn't be um a a routine that people go to go to spend their end of their days in care homes. So we measure that in terms of uh age sixty five population, age sixty five and above. And um if we're getting things right, we should be on target for that. We have seen an uptick and that is a bit of a trend that's been happening for a while. We think as a result of uh getting people out of hospital quickly, putting them into care homes, and we're just not getting them back home out of care homes. So we've got a piece of work to address that. And we are aiming to be back on track by quarter four for that. But we will report that every quarter. So you'll have an opportunity to to see how we're doing with that with that metric. Lastly, in section four, the financial detail. So ordinarily, we would just put the detail in that's at four point two, which is the very high level. So it tells you how much money is within the Better Care Fund in the very high level. Remember, last time, Chair, you requested that you're being asked to have a look at this, that you'd want to understand a bit more detail about what that is spent on. So we put in four point three for you this time. And that's uh in the left hand column, that details the type of activity that the BCF uh is funding. Those are national descriptors, those those titles. Um so you can get a sense of the kind of thing that the BCF is is in investing in the kind of schemes that we're looking at. So you can see there's a lot of money spent on the community equipment service because that's exactly how we keep people at home is by making sure they've got the right kind of equipment so they don't have to be in a care home or in hospital. Um there's a large sum of money that's the disabled facilities related uh disabled facilities grant. That goes part that gets passported straight out to our district and city councils, comes through the Better Care Fund. And then there's an awful lot there around uh discharge support, as I said, about getting people out of hospital. Lots of things in there about intermediate care. So how do we support people at home um and in a in a short term approach? Um and obviously, there's there's things there involved in um things like unpaid carers as well. So there is a lot more detail below that, but there's some detail that I wouldn't bring here because I wouldn't want in the public arena, the exact value of contracts that are given to individual providers. However, I'm really happy to bring more information um on any of these uh if if you want to do a detail about the kind of act a bit more detail about the kind of activity we're funding. But I thought that might be a good start of attend to see what the board thought.
Uh thank you. Are there any um feedback on the BCF? Uh actually, I've got a question. So I was looking at the table in three, two, three, um which is the residential admissions. Um as I can see the rate and the admissions, but I couldn't see the actual data. I thought there was a potentially a line where there might be a missing figure because I didn't understand how Devon is not on track to achieve its target, but I didn't understand what the actual, so what was not on track. And I couldn't actually see how you come to that conclusion because I couldn't read it from the table.
Yes, it's one of those things where we um the the way we are required to report it is per um hundred thousand population. So the rate is for quarter one. We wouldn't have wanted to have any more than a hundred and forty four and a half admissions. I don't know how you admit half a person. Um a hundred and forty four and a half admissions per hundred thousand population in that quarter. And you can see um so sorry, the rate, yes, the number of emissions is three hundred and fourteen. We wouldn't want the rate to be any more than a hundred and forty four.
Okay.
So you can see, actually, the reason it's carried on, I don't know why that's carried on across. That's because clearly we haven't had quarter two, three and four yet. So um the bottom that bottom table is is incorrect. And forgive me, when I I jumped straight into talking, I'm so excited about the BCF, I jumped straight in and talked about it. And I completely neglected to introduce my colleague, Justin Wigan, from the NHS, from the ICB. Um who this is, this is a joint approach. And forgive me, Justin, yeah, I completely, I didn't see you on screen and completely forgot to introduce you. And you you may want to come in with a with something there.
That's okay, Sonya. Hi, everyone. I'm Justin Wigan. I'm the Senior Locality Manager in uh in NHS Devon uh and responsible for best care fund uh across a couple of the local authorities footprints. I was just going to clarify that the the number of admissions are the actual number of admissions for residential care. Um and I think looking at those numbers, um the it's an annual target. Um so we would expect three and three hundred and fourteen admissions um across across the year. I think it's, I believe, what that figure is. The rate of a hundred and forty four point five is a hundred and forty four point five per one hundred thousand population. So it's slightly different figures. I was just quickly trying to look for the actual details in the background and failed miserably uh in last minute. But um um we the other challenge around this is that it's an annual target. So we will only truly know at the end of the financial year, um whether we've whether we've managed that target. But what we do uh look at is how that performs is um what the performance looks like over a rolling twelve month period. So it gives us that indication to say, are we heading in the right direction or not? So that's that's why we're saying at the minute because of the rolling twelve month target, we're slightly adrift from from where we want to be. And there's also been a change in in the way in which that metric uh has been uh or is is due to be captured and reported on against previous years, which has has changed. Uh it makes comparing previous year's performance and this year's performance a little bit more challenging for our for our data analysts.
Thank you, Justin. Yeah. So I so so um I can see exactly what we're saying now, the three hundred. So what we haven't got uh Chair is the actual, you're absolutely right. I thought the actual was, so the three hundred fourteen is the target. We've told you that we're not on target, but we haven't told you by how many because we haven't included that detail. So I've made a note, as Justin pointed out, we'll we'll make sure that that is included because that's just telling you the target and we're not on track. It hasn't actually given you the number. So apologies for that.
Uh thank you. So so um so we're not on track. So it would be interesting to know perhaps what the top three mitigating actions might be that are being implemented to bring it onto track. And then the 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 bit that I was also struggling a little bit to interpret was it's it's good to see a little bit of the detail and the activities. Um does the a hundred and thirty four million, are we on track with that? Is that? So I was trying to work out what does this mean to me? Uh what does this mean to the board? And um I I suppose it was a a little bit of context around that. It's a number, looks big. I don't know whether that's going to be sufficient. I don't know whether it's um whether there's some context around it about that might drive uh further discussion or a priority for the board. And I'm not and I'm not able to discern that from reading that here, but I'd be happy to receive your insight.
Yes, of course. So what I've done is reported the activities. Um um what I haven't done is reported the spend, but the um in term, other than just the allocated funding. So what I can see is when you look at all, these are the allocations, this is what's been spent on each. That is, so the totalling a hundred and thirty four million, you'll see some of that we we put in. It's not all money that we receive, some of it we money in. So we we put some money in for hospital discharge, for example. In terms of where are we looking for the end of the year, we are looking like an overspend of something like one point eight million pounds this year. The way that works is we have a fifty fifty risk share. So the council covers half of that and the ICB covers the other half. The good news is that's a smaller overspend than last year. Uh the bad news is we cannot contemplate having an overspend. We all know the the position of our of our respective um systems. So there is a significant piece of work underway to to look at all of the spending in this area. So for example, the community equipment service, we have an um a new contract. We went out to tender um earlier this or last year, but we awarded it earlier this year. Um and same provider, but a new contract which will deliver significant savings. So we so there's work underway there to make sure that they do indeed deliver the savings that have been promised. Um and then there's some of the other smaller areas of funding. So there's uh that that are in place. We're going through and making sure that they are indeed being spent on the right thing and delivering the outcomes they should. If they're not, then we would be looking to uh pull that spending back. Also making sure, of course, that each of the each of the allocations are actually being fully spent. So there's a significant piece of work overseen by uh the chief execs and the chief finance officers of both the council and NHS Devon to make sure that we bring that uh back on track.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Solvay. It's it's really good. And I I wouldn't want to uh go into the detail that would require revealing of any information that would be commercially sensitive. So um it's really good to hear the context. And it's nice to hear that we're on track. And I think if it's one point eight billion in a hundred and thirty four thousand, three hundred thirty four uh hundred thirty four thousand, sorry, hundred and thirty four million, two hundred and ninety nine. I think that's a pretty, pretty, well, it feels to me well managed. I suppose at some point, if there was a uh if that was moving towards an amber or a red flag. I suppose at some point, if there was a, if that was moving towards an amber or a red flag at some point, it would be important that we perhaps are able to turn, have a discussion in the right way at a strategic level about how that might be managed. You're obviously having those discussions already, but I'd, I'd take your lead as to what item might need to be discussed in the right way at the newly formulated committee, whatever it might be, to try and see if we could do things better, if we could coordinate across different partners in a way that would help you to achieve your target. Don't want any surprises.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I think, I'm, I'm sure Justin would be happy on behalf of the ICB as well, that we, that we do that kind of perhaps a bit of a rag rating approach. In the way that we've said, how far are we on or off target? So we'll give some more information if we serve for residential admissions. We can do that in terms of the spend as well. We could, you know, we can give it, you know, a track of where we are. And I, I thank you for the, the comment about the 134 million versus 1.8 million. I can say our finance, chief finance officers would not share that view. But, but we're very happy to sort of share how, how we're doing and the kind of things we're doing to bring that back on track. Yeah.
Peter.
I just wanted to make the connection between the previous discussion about winter and vaccination, because we know, don't we, that we'll be having more conversations with each other over the coming few months as our acute hospitals become fuller. I'm trying to think of the right, the right, the right words because of the impact of winter. And, and we know really the biggest impact on increased emergency admissions and particularly for the vulnerable elderly, that's, that translates into longer lengths of stay and a need to go back to, to a facility that is of a higher dependency than perhaps they came from. And our communities can do more to protect those vulnerable people and therefore spend less by vaccinating themselves and encouraging others to be vaccinated. So, so it feels really important when we're having those discussions and, and councillors are able to take the opportunities to remind people that there's a direct consequence of the overspend because of the actions that people could take and, and maybe choose not to.
The one we're looking at is for January. So we're looking to approve the Health and Wellbeing Strategy. That should be endorsed. We've got the, also a candidate is a citizen advice services. Candidate is the NHS Devon Update. Suicide Prevention Action Plan, that's a board request. Better Care Fund Update, Health and Wellbeing Strategies, Priorities and Outcomes and Monitoring. So I think that speaks to what Simon was referring to as coming up in January. Are there any, are there any issues, items for the agenda on January the 8th that this board think that we should be discussing? I'd be very happy to understand if there's a 45 minute chunk that you would like to discuss something meaningful in. I'm looking for items that might well be framed and fit for January the 8th on that point. If there's anything there, please let, let me know or let the Simon and Alan know. Thank you. And then finally, if we move on to, what's the next item, last item? Next meeting, which is January the 8th. So is that set in your diaries for January the 8th? I hope so. Great. So thank you very much, everybody. I really appreciated the hard work that's gone into the preparation papers for the meetings. I do hope that we can carve out some meaningful sessions for discussion in the January meeting. And I, I know, would it be appropriate to wish you a happy Christmas? Close meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you. Cheers then.